Order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its supreme republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all board members are present and we'll move on to our student showcase. We're going to hear from our National Merit Scholar Superintendent Barton, you want to add anything there?
We're just so proud to have Graham with us this evening, such a huge accomplishment. And we're so thankful for all of your hard work and how you represent our school district. And I think Sam is here to say some words and I know Sam's, you know, worked with Graham and we'd love to hear a little bit from you and your story as well, if you could share a little bit with the board. Yeah, I know Sam's gonna say a few words, but we'd love to hear from you in terms of, you know, what your journey's been and what this has all meant to you and even enlighten us a little bit more about, you know, what it means to be a National Merit Scholar. So let's turn it over to Sam and you can say some words.
You didn't know he was gonna say anything.
Well, we're assuming he's a pretty bright guy.
So the National Merit Scholarship Program is what Graham is a semifinalist in right now. He'll find out in February, yep. And there are not many kids across the nation that get this, this honor. I would like to read what we submitted on the district's behalf in order to recommend Graham for the scholarship. When Graham Anderson was a fifth grader, I was their brand new K-12 coordinator of Gifted Ed. Even though I had come with experience in other districts, it turned out I had more to learn. Our initial screening made this clear, what should we do for a student who got a 160 on the COGAT, a group ability test with a mean of 100? Did you know you got that?
No, you told me.
I realized quickly we had a student in need of a specialized program. Now about to graduate, Graham is known across our system for accomplishments in academics, athletics, music ensembles, and clubs. It is true Graham has experienced success in many areas. Most worthy of mention in this review, however, is the fact that unlike most well-rounded teenagers, he has shown deep achievement in math and physics, his area of passion. He is the opposite of a mile wide and an inch deep. His multi-year enrollment in an extremely rigorous online school called Art of Problem Solving has developed a conceptual understanding of mathematics that is rivaled to none. AOPS employs gifted mathematicians from around the country who know how to develop talent. Graham rose to every challenge, earning straight A's. The weekly writing problems in these courses developed his ability to articulate his reasoning, explaining the step-by-step computations that led to a final answer or proof. Graham has an unwavering commitment to whatever he puts his mind to doing, and this diligence has led to some memorable anecdotes. In eighth grade, he chose to read Frankenstein, Walden, and Mark Twain for his personal reading log. As a sophomore, he surprised his math teacher by answering in imaginary numbers for a negative square root instead of writing undefined. As a junior in AP Physics, he chose to concurrently enroll in AOPS Physics to learn about advanced topics outside of the college board program on his own time. At the 53rd Annual St. Cloud State University Math Contest, he led his team to a win and caught the longtime coordinator's eye. "Nice showing from Princeton," he commented. Graham's intellectual intensity is matched only by his humility. His sixth grade teacher, Mrs. Roby, remembers his confidence radiated without overpowering those around him. Anyone who has met Graham notes his critical thinking and genuine nature. His enthusiasm is captivating, he is quick to help, and he is patient and kind with people of all ages. He was recently crowned homecoming king. This was met with nothing but compliments. He uses his gifts and talents in wholesome ways. While others chose to adopt a highway trash cleanup or carnival face painting for a high school service project, Graham ran a multi-week technology course at a local assisted living facility. This upcoming spring, he will teach a physics camp for a local homeschool co-op. This event will showcase his ability to be analytical and creative. Our Gifted Education Program expanded and evolved alongside Graham. Because of Graham, the programs he leaves in his wake will serve many future students. We are extremely proud of this distinguished young man, are grateful to be a part of his success story, and wish him the very best.
I think what we're gonna do, Graham, is if we can come up, we'd like to give you a certificate. Again, so proud of you. And I know that each board member would like to shake your hand as well and maybe we can get a picture and then, then you gotta say a few words. So that's gonna be the order. So let's go ahead and shake some hands.
Sure.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And here's your certificate and we're gonna bring people around to take a picture. Well, they know the drill. Some, some can be in the front, some can be in the back.
I can't believe there's people taller than you.
Everyone get pictures? All right, all right. Now, if board members can go back and Graham, if you want to go over here and just share anything that you'd like to share, that'd be great.
That's not open ended at all. Okay, well, obviously thank you all very, very much for recognizing me like this. I am very thankful for that. And I suppose if I had to share anything, it would relate to the end of your little speech that you gave. Thank you for that, by the way, as well. Ms. Haiki said that the program grew along with me and I also grew along with the program and that the programs that will be left in the wake of this are really important. And I do hope that especially with this thing, that the recognition from this, the most important thing it does is give more opportunities to other students to get into things like this. This is a really important scholarship. I don't think it was very prevalent before, at this school before I got it. And I hope that in future years, other students are here for the same reason I am right now. And I also hope that all the programs that you work so hard to help aid all of the students like me that can go above what most of us are asked, continue to grow and are helped along by the school board.
You, you need to know that you, you did keep us on our toes over the years because we had to keep finding new programs. And that, that was great and we were so happy to be able to do that. So any questions for the board?
Yeah, just one comment. So if you guys don't know about AOPS, I really encourage you guys to learn about AOPS. I mean, that's really a great way for the school to expand their offering, you know, without having to hire people, keep someone on staff or something for like really high students. That was, that saved us, right? That's the only reason Graham really had that opportunity. So please look at how valuable that is and look at giving it the credit it's due as far as like on people's transcripts. So continue that fight, I guess, to get that foot there.
Very good. All right, let's give our honorable applause. You're welcome to stay for the whole meeting or you're happy, you can go as well.
Well, we're taking all of your seats upstairs.
All right, we'll move on. There are no citizens' comments. In all my years on the board, I've never had this many people in the room when we get the report from the audit. So welcome and move on in, here we go. All right, we'll go on to board member committee report, starting with Melissa.
So since our last meeting, I had the Rum River Co-op Group, Governing Board Group, which is so awesome and just so fun and interesting to hear about all the trainings and all the new things they have going to help our students. And there's gonna be maybe some practical changes in buildings and stuff there, so we'll see how that goes. We also did the Tiger Connections Group with, what was it?
The High School CTE Advisory, whatever your high school group.
It was, it was the CTE Advisory and the Tiger Community Connections Group joined together.
I couldn't remember what the other one was, but that was so great. And we had the Advanced Foods Class that made like little scones and all kinds of stuff and it was fabulous. On that same note, sorry, I'll finish here. I got to go to a five-course meal served by the Advanced Foods Two class and it was fabulous. And I highly recommend teachers signing up if that comes around again. But yeah, our kids are just so talented and it's, it's so fun to watch them in their white jackets and hats and like, oh, can I get you something? And it's like, well, yeah, you know, anyway. But yes, it was really great, so.
Thank you, Melissa.
Like Melissa mentioned, I did attend that Tiger Connections Committee and joint with the CTE Advisory Board from the high school. And it really was a very, it was a good session. Melissa and I sat with two of the staff members who are the fax teachers at the high school and I was impressed, as Melissa was too. Just on some of the dreams that they have for their programs and it was, it was just a super good meeting. I also attended a Wellness Committee meeting and went to the MREA Conference a few weeks ago along with a few other board members and then we just had our Finance Committee right before this board meeting, so.
Eric?
Nothing to report.
I also attended the MREA Convention at Craigens. And one of the things I went to, one of the workshops that I went to, we did, we did look at CTE buildings and programs and listen to other schools. We also, I also attended Planning for a Bond Referendum as well. But I also attended a workshop on ChatGPT and maybe that's something that we could do in the future. Superintendent Barton has that information of what's going on in our district with that. So that was, that was very interesting. I attended a The Executive Board Meeting. That organization continues to look at how to rebrand itself and become more helpful to their member schools. I had agenda planning for this meeting and then I also attended the musical. I don't know. Yeah, so amazing when you talk about talented students just across the board, what an amazing. I just, I bring my grandkids from other district and it's just that we, we just don't get enough positive and it's just such an amazing experience. So that was great. Chad?
Yeah, so I had the agenda planning as well and then just before this meeting, I had.
Dawn?
So I attended the MSBA Student School Board Development Event with our two school board reps, which was an awesome day. We got to go down to the new Shakopee High School Academy career. And it's interesting how they have divided their school up and they actually have their students divided up. Ninth graders are all in one pod and then the other kids are divided into their pods that they are in. If it's Human Resources, IT, and they stay in that single area for all core classes. And then they only do a four-hour period and then they do quarters. So it's interesting to see that and how that all runs in their career academy and swing that day. So that was exciting, along with seeing other school board reps around the state. We had kids come all the way down from Alco and Duluth area. So they left like at four o'clock that morning to come down to Shakopee for that day. So that's a lot of dedication on the students to attend that. Also this last past week, I attended the MREA Conference and I attended a couple of the CTE classes. And a couple of things that stood out is when I went to some of the CTE, they had the state economics people there. And in our state, 16% of the jobs that are in the workforce require a bachelor's degree. And that was a real eye-opener. And I think the other thing that we heard a lot was when the block top ends. We heard that a lot and when you think of our district and the four counties, we do have a lot of area where the block top ends and how we are in that rural area as well. So that was just a good reinforcement and a good workshop.
Attended the middle school and high school band concerts, had activities committee meeting and a finance meeting. That's it.
Okay. All right, we will move on to the student council report.
We're gonna be fancy and go in the middle.
Yeah, sure.
We like fancy.
Alrighty, good evening, everybody. So like Dawn said, we attended the MSBA School Board Meeting in Shakopee on October 24th. Awesome experience, we took a lot away from it. So just to kind of like touch a little bit on it, so I do have this, which I will pass around for everybody. And it just kind of explains everything that is at Shakopee that we do not have currently. So one of the things. So they do have a lot of diverse clubs and I would like to see that come to Princeton High School. I do feel like we are lacking a little bit of diversity, which I think I would love to see a little bit more of. And obviously it is, we are a more rural town, so that is kind of hard pulling people from more urban cities. But I do think it would be a great thing and even for those diverse students that we do have now to have like that opportunity to feel like they can make a club and for all the students to feel welcome into that. So another thing is they have CNA classes. We do have a CNA class provided by the Princeton High School as well, but you do have to commute to Malacca. So we were thinking that maybe with the new CTE wing, being able to incorporate a CNA class in there and find a way. Because we have received a lot of student feedback and that commute to Malacca and back to Princeton to make it on time to school does get a little bit tricky.
Shakopee had a really nice setup. They had like a little fake room with like the curtain and then like the, what is it called? Fake body, but that's not what it's called.
Anakin.
Anakin, there we go.
They also, their health wing for their students that are in like the Health Academy, they have it paired with the Regions Hospital, which is part of St. Francis. So they have doctors coming from Regions and that kind of thing to kind of teach the students, which I think was awesome. And obviously, I mean, like I said, we are a more rural town, so it does make it more difficult for that to happen. But even if we do have doctors coming from Fairview, just to kind of like get a more feel for what is going on or that kind of thing for students that are interested. Their tech classes, they use recycled things within the community. So like kids get the opportunity to take apart computers and PCs and rebuild them. And we do have like AP Computer Sciences and that kind of thing, but I do not think our students get the opportunity to do that.
Or people would bring in their old computers and then they would like fix them up as like a class project. But it would be like also people getting free fixes for computers if they trust them, with high school kids, of course, but.
Yes. Shakopee is also the third largest employer, so that means that they are the third largest employing like high school. So all the students that leave Shakopee are getting like careers within like the first four years of them being out of high school. So Shakopee is really preparing their students for their futures and yes, Princeton is as well, but we are not up there on that list. And so I think there are some few things that they could be doing a little bit better. They have 86-minute classes and so they have, what is it? Four blocks? Four-hour blocks. And so that really gives students the opportunity to focus on those things that they may need extra help in and just kind of get more strength in those subjects. A lot of Shakopee has students going to Harvard and Yale and Cornell and Ivy League schools. And once again, that's also, students feel confident enough to apply to those schools because they do feel strength in those subjects and that they will be prepared for their future. And yeah, there's a ton more, but that's basically the recap, the things that we wanted to take away from it.
A little Studco recap. Ben, thank you for letting us bogey with questions about the bathrooms and they are done and we appreciate it. They're really nice. We even have new water bottle fillers and the water is cold and not lukewarm, so we appreciate that.
It's nice and clean, too. Appreciate that.
Student Council recently had a Merlin's fundraiser and I think, do you know how much we, I want to say $500 for Merlin's. We also have a Pizza Pub fundraiser coming up, December 11th. So talking to you guys till December 11th. Love to see you guys eat there. We're also doing Native American History Month, so we're having announcements being said each morning just to kind of let high school students be aware and that kind of thing. Our food drive just wrapped up today. There are kids after school counting up food of what we collected. So we'll get that number and how many meals or whatever soon. Other than Studco, Leo Club is, has a winter drive going and we are doing a collaboration with Walmart. So if you have any younger kids or you're just going through your old snow club or snow gear, feel free to donate that to the high school. There's right, a bin in front of the office or there should be a bin by Friday at Walmart. And then speaking of our music department, I found out a cool fact. That choir, like students in choir makes up 20% of our kids at high school and that's a fairly decent number and that's without band. So I'm guessing the band would be, like adding to that number would be 30, 40% of our kids at high school are involved in music. And compared to other schools, that's, number is really high. Other schools, it's like 10 or 5%. So we got really lucky. After COVID, kids came back and were ready and that's amazing. Also, Magical Tickets are on sale. They just went on sale last night, so get your tickets before they sell out. It's a really cool experience at the primary school. We get all dressed up in medieval gear and there's a whole royal court and everything. So tickets are on sale, I believe the link's on Facebook.
When is it?
That's a good question. It's the Friday and Saturday before Christmas, I believe. So it's in December. My mom would pull up the date, I bet. And then Light Up Princeton. Yeah, that sounds right. Light Up Princeton, I know, is this weekend, so also 15th and 16th for Magical. Light Up Princeton, NHS and cross-country and a bunch of other sports, I believe, are helping out with Light Up Princeton. So that turns on this weekend and I'm super excited and that's an exciting town thing. And then recently, do you want to talk about your achievements?
We are working on HOSA and DECA getting approved. So if you don't know what HOSA and DECA are, HOSA is a club for future medical professionals. So you get to compete at different schools all around the country, basically. And you just get to compete like different case studies and that kind of thing. And it provides a really great opportunity for those kids that do want to go into the medical field or like science field or anything like that. We're also working on DECA, which is for future business professionals. So it's the same thing as HOSA, just for business and it focuses more on getting those business things out, like the entrepreneurship and that kind of thing. So we're working on getting that approved, so you will see an approval come to your desk pretty soon here, but yeah.
Shout out to the people who want HOSA, like Mr. Jacobs right there, so.
Yes, shout out to Mr. Jacobs, he's one of our advisors.
But yeah, do you have any questions or anything for us? It was kind of long, but it's been a while. Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Move on to superintendent report.
Thank you, students. And I think it'd be great to follow up to and learn more about the Student School Board learnings associated with that training that you went through too, so that we can continue to expand that role. I want to acknowledge the, the work that had been done in the district to acknowledge Veterans Day. I know that was a little while back, but that was always a special piece. Thankful for everyone that helped organize that, the veterans that come to participate. When I've had a chance to talk to many of them, it was very appreciated and they felt very special. So I think that's pretty awesome. Today, we had a strong admin PLC really focusing on student learning and our three desired outcomes under student learning for our continuous improvement plan. Focusing highly on building and integrating authentic literacy, reading, writing, speaking into all of our courses, so lots of discussion and work there and building on the Princeton paradigm. And also working on continuous improvement with our curriculum mapping. Just want to point that out. We do have a draft of a legislative platform that our public engagement group will give one more read-through before we put that in front of the board for you to review and hopefully give us feedback and then we would accept that. And that would be more of a localized legislative platform that would be in addition to the different platforms through MSBA or CE or MRA and those kinds of things. And it would be very localized to us. So lots of work has gone into that and we're excited to share that with you. Our start time task force, we had close to 40 people asked to participate in that. We, our intent was to keep that to be about 12 participants because we had such a large group inquire about that, we did make that 12. So we are working through getting that first meeting set and, you know, we'll continue to brief the board on the progress of that group as we go. I want the board to know that, you know, one thing that I've been doing that's a little bit different in the last few months is I've been trying to broker individual meetings with community members just to talk school, right? And to get their input from a community members, business members' perspective on what their thoughts are, school, the good, on our schools, the good, the bad, and the ugly, especially in preparation for a possible future referendum. Just want to pick their brain, you know? What potentially would they feel our community would support and what, what wouldn't they, right? So it's been a really good learning experience and lots of sit, sit-down meetings for coffee tomorrow. I'm excited to go out to a community member's farm and visit with him a little bit and get some insights and talk school with him for a little bit. So I've been, been getting out there to do quite a bit of that and I think that it's, it's helping. And the last thing that I'll just point out is in relation to our facilities. You know, going back 10-plus years ago, prior to the primary school being built, there was a large community engagement to create what the needs are as it relates to our school facilities. There's a long list created and there was a finance group that indicated that the threshold would be 30 million. Everything that was left off that line, right? The thought was that at some point in time, we were going to have to address those needs in our district. And this was back 10-plus years ago. As you're well aware, we duplicated that same process four years ago or so. We had lots of things happen, including the pandemic. And, and we failed. Now, the last year and a half or so, we've been at this table discussing what our options are because all of the needs identified have not gone away. You know, the, the debate and the struggle for all of you was, you know, you know, we have all of these needs and is it best, is, is the approach best to go for a smaller scale back, more modest project that would have a very low tax impact, knowing that that wouldn't address all of the various needs in the district, but it would be a step forward and it would be a phased-in approach. We've been discussing around that the last few months. And over the, the last few months, there's been a level of uneasiness, I think, from some board members on, you know, moving in that direction. We, just in the last week, I think in reading the board and lots of discussions with you all, I'm gonna recommend that we put a pause on that and relook at our strategy and really aggressively bring the board together almost on a weekly basis, if needed, to action plan around our process and reengage the community and our stakeholders in terms of what they feel like we need and what they feel like the community can support, right? And that includes all of stakeholders. And the one piece that, that I think that, that we've talked about quite a lot lately I, with some of you, is trying to reengage our team members more and get more of their input as it relates to what they feel like our needs are in our schools, right? And, and putting more of an emphasis on that in addition to the greater community. But we really want to try and engage more with our own team members to get their input, right? So there's a lot of work to do, right? I mean, we were, we were full steam ahead on some of this, right? I mean, we were full steam ahead on some of this, right? And we were preparing ourselves for a potential submission of a review and comment to the state for that potential scaled-back version that would prioritize our career academy. But in lieu of some of the discussions, I think we're going to take a step back, and we're going to see if there's a way that we can tackle not only the CTE needs, but the other needs in the district, or at least more than what we've recently talked about. And, you know, what would be that threshold that we felt like the community can support? But it's really going to be, if we're doing this, which I think we are, I mean, there's a lot of work. And I've talked to many of you, and I feel like there's a strong commitment to doing that. And I think what we have been doing is we were relying on lots of the data. The board, over the last year, we've been relying on lots of the data that we've received from the previous two referendums, when we had large groups participate in giving us feedback. And I think the thought is now is, let's reengage the community and get new data and new input, and we'll see where that takes us. Okay, so please look for some communications from me here soon to set up some additional meetings, potentially adding another board meeting in December to fully focus on facilities or a smaller work group. Okay, so that's kind of yet to be determined. I think that our public engagement committee and our long-range planning committees should really take a lead on moving some of this work forward. So that's all I got. I'll end my comments unless any board members have questions for me. Thank you.
Okay. We will move on to approve the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion made by Don, is there a second?
Second, Melissa.
That conveyed by Melissa. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number eight, we'll discuss and act on the previous board meeting minutes from 10:17. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Motion made by Chad, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Deb, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion made by Deb, is there a second?
Second, Melissa.
Second by Melissa, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We move on then to the informational section of our meeting, and the first 10A is the first reading of policy. The summary of those policies are there, and Don, do you have any additions or discussion to add to that?
No, but a lot of these policies did go out to different groups within our organization for review before they came here, so a lot of them have been vetted pretty well, so.
All right. Any questions for Don? All right. We will move on to 10B, which is the January organizational meeting. And originally, there was a thought that because the first is Monday, that maybe we couldn't have our board meeting on Tuesday. There is no school that day, but we checked with MSVA. We can have our board meeting on that Tuesday, so that is scheduled as the organizational meeting and then whatever.
So that's January 2nd.
January 2nd. Now, the only thing different about that is that there isn't school and the staff doesn't work that day. So you want to answer that?
Yeah, I'll.
Our regular staff is all here.
Your staff will be here?
Well, the secretary and stuff.
Yeah, there'll just be some admin here, but most other folks will have that day off, so we'll be able to take them care of.
Okay. All right, so that is, you might have had discussion that we weren't, but we are.
I mean, it's January 2nd.
And generally speaking, we'll have the organizational meeting, and if there are any, you know, smaller items that we need to have the board vote on, we potentially would have a regular meeting, but generally, that would be a five-minute, you know, kind of a thing. It might be if we have some HR items that we need to approve hires or those kinds of things, but it would be just kind of smaller, simple things.
Okay. And then, we move on to 10C, which is to hear from the audit. And I think that's happening virtually.
Yeah, it's happening virtually.
Is Carolyn on?
Yeah, they're putting her on right now.
There she is. Hello.
Hello.
Welcome.
Can you, yeah, can you, we're going to have to turn up our volume a little bit and then try and talk as loud as you can until we can get this figured out.
Will do. Is that coming through okay?
It does come in better when you're closer and you're talking louder, for sure.
I will do that. I'll move, may.
And then, if you want to share your screen, if you, because that would be the best way for us to get it up on to the screen for us.
Absolutely.
Okay, Michelle, do you want to introduce our presenter?
So with us tonight is Carolyn Stutzman. She's been working with the district for a very long time. I've been here, this is my 11th audit with the district, so she's been here longer than that, and I probably don't want to say how long. She probably doesn't want.
That's okay. No worries.
She is going to take us through a summary of our audit for the year. As you know, it takes us a long time to get through an audit. We start working on it right away as July rolls in, and it takes us right up to just about the week of the board meeting to close everything out. So Carolyn, you can take one away.
Sounds good. Thank you for the introduction. Is everyone seeing this okay?
Yes.
Yes, perfect. All right, well, as mentioned, I'm Carolyn Stutzman. I am the audit partner that is engaged for your audit. So I'd like to take just a few minutes of your time and go through the results of the audit for 2023. So the main reason you ask us to work with you is to provide an opinion on the financial statements. That opinion is housed within the independent auditors report. Also, within the independent auditors report, before we get to that opinion, both management's responsibilities, as well as our responsibilities, are outlined. And management's responsibilities are for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with GAAP. Really, what that means is that management is responsible for determining the numbers. Our responsibility, then, is to conduct our audit of those numbers and provide an opinion on them. We aren't allowed to do both. There needs to be a line drawn in the sand, if you will, so kind of just outlining that information. So then, the opinion we're providing is what's called an unmodified opinion. That's the highest level that you can receive and not a change from prior years. And that means that we believe the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects as of June 30th, 2023. In addition to looking at the numbers as we go throughout our audit, we also conducted our audit in accordance with government auditing standards, meaning we considered internal controls as we went throughout that process. We did not have any written findings in relation to that, which is not something we are always able to stand in front or sit in front of boards and communicate. So that is great news, and kudos to the district for being able to have that result. Additionally, because the district spends more than $750,000 of federal dollars during the year, we also needed to conduct what's called a single audit, or two, actually. Two separate programs were looked at this year, the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, as well as the education stabilization funds. There were no findings in relation to either of those programs this year. One final component before we dig into the financial analysis is in relation to Minnesota legal compliance. The Office of the State Auditor puts together seven checklists filled with many Minnesota state statutes that we ask a number of questions about. There were no findings related to any of that either. And so with that, we'll dig into the financial analysis. And with general education aid being the largest funding source for you as a school district in the state of Minnesota, we look at the two main components of that calculation, the formula allowance and pupil unit. So we start here with the formula allowance, showing where it's been over the last 10 years, what we know currently based on legislature, but focusing on that 2023 line and the 2% increase that was received. Next, we look at pupil units, and we begin here with your resident ADM. So these are only the students living.
Carolyn, can I just interrupt for a second? Sorry.
Absolutely.
If you could, on your screen, make it bigger, maybe, yeah, just so it makes it a little easier for us to see. If you can, I mean, if it's going to throw you off.
It's hiding up here. Let me see if I can, I'm going to move it first, and then I will. I don't know if that changed anything.
No, it's all right. You tried. We have it on our computer too. It's all in line.
All right, sorry, it didn't seem to make it any bigger. All right. So yes, we're beginning here with resident ADM. So for 2023, resident ADMs increased by 56 in total. It must have made it a little bit bigger, because now it's actually scrolling. Want me to try to go bigger again?
No, it's good.
Is it okay? Okay. All right, so then if we apply the weighting factors that are at the top of this slide, as well as take into consideration open enrollment, we arrive at total adjusted PUN. And so this is the amount that you're paid off of from the state. And so the top line, the resident line there, that comes from what we just looked at on the previous slide with the weighting factors now applied to it. And then the next two lines, resident PUN going elsewhere and non-resident PUN coming in, that is the impact of open enrollment. And the two of those lines together for 2023 was a loss of 329 compared to a loss of 317 in 2022. So at the end, the total adjusted PUN, again, what you're paid off of from the state, increased by 45. Here we have general fund sources of revenue. So in total, the revenue in your general fund increased by just under 7%. Some of the main reasons for the fluctuations have to do with state revenue increasing for a couple of the reasons we've already touched on, which was the increase in formula allowance, as well as the increase in enrollment. In addition to that, special education aid increased in that category, in the state aid category. Your local property tax revenue decreased with a decrease in the levy. And then, in addition to that other revenue, which is everything else, that category, excuse me, increased, and that had to do with additional federal funds related to COVID dollars. The next couple of slides take a look at both revenues and expenditures from a per ADM served standpoint. This gives us the ability to compare to some state average information as well. But looking at 2023 first, we see that there is an increase. So revenue increased just at a greater rate than ADM served, so that's really just kind of the components of the calculation. But then we can go back to the previous year and compare to some state average information. And as in previous years and in previous discussions, the district is under the state average in total, as well as in all of the categories, and some, you know, things to consider here. It is an average, so definitely there are things that change from one district to another when comparing this information. Things that can change the picture for one district versus another can be the levy and referendum dollars, the size of those, special education, federal dollars, compensatory aid, all things of that nature can change that. So additional information for you as you're analyzing the district.
Yeah, all right. So I think there would be just a good time for us to just highlight this, and I'm saying this for the Union Times in particular, because I think it's a huge story that needs to be told. And is the fact that number of their states, how much we receive in revenue per pupil unit, right? 12,775. The state average, which means all, the average in the state of Minnesota, their per pupil revenue is 15,166. So as a school district, Princeton has approximately $2,500 less per pupil unit than the average school district in the state of Minnesota. Now, if someone wants to throw their calculator out, 3,200, 3,200 students times 2.2, how much?
8.4 million.
What could we do, board, with another 8.5 million dollars? So there's the headline. Why should your zip code determine how many resources are spent on you for your education in the state of Minnesota? And that's the story we need to continue to tell and tell and tell, because to me, that's a disturbing slide, and we see it every single year. All right, thank you.
Just one, the only way to fix that is to run an operating levy, right?
For Walmart, that's the biggest.
And your tax base has to grow, because that helps, but to run an operating levy.
And tech levies, and, you know, there's some other areas, but yes, generally speaking, the operating referendum is something that about 20% of the districts don't have, and we're one of those.
And that's voter approved.
Yes.
And there's no share from the state on that either. That's all local property taxes. Sorry, Carolyn, I think you can continue.
Not at all. It's good discussion, good discussion. And we like to start with the revenue as well. I mean, we'd show the expenditure here. It's a similar story, but we like to start with the revenue, because as you mentioned, you're spending within your means here. So you have a similar story when you're looking at expenditures per ADM as well, compared to the state average. So here we have a presentation of your general fund expenditures in a pie chart format. So generally speaking, year-over-year, spending between the programs is pretty consistent with, you know, right around a 1% change, if that, with a couple of items just to note briefly. The instructional support services increased compared to the previous year. From this presentation perspective, there was an instruction software and more teaching and learning materials purchased. And then, special education also increased. We saw that on the revenue side. You're seeing it on the expenditure side as well, with an increase in needs for your kiddos. So the other item to touch on here is the instruction components, which are regular instruction, vocational instruction, as well as special education instruction. Those three components together are 64.5% of the general fund spending. The Office of the State Auditor puts out a guideline of about 65% that they would like to see for that percentage for instructional dollars spent in the general fund, so you're right in line with the guidance they have as well. Here we have a general fund budget to actual snapshot. The original and final budget are in the first two columns. There were some amendments to that original budget, but both anticipated a decrease in fund balance in that 3.2 to 3.4 range, 3.2 to 3.4 million range. Actual results are in the third column, showing that fund balance decreased by 1.3 million. And then if we look at some variances, total revenue is all the, kind of up there towards the top. I'm showing over budget there. If we apply a percentage to that, it's 1.1%. So on the size of budget that you're dealing with, that's pretty close. We'll look at it from that perspective. On the expenditure side of things, seeing under budget there, that's 3.7% if we apply a percentage to that. I'm looking at a couple of the items there, elementary and secondary education coming in under budget. Really conservative budgeting on the salary and benefit side of things, as well as lower activity for student activities than anticipated. And then on the capital or on the sites and building side of things, just less capital-related expenditures than anticipated. So here we bring the general fund all together. Um, we've touched on revenues, expenditures, as well as that change in fund balance already. But here we see total ending fund balance, which is right around 11.3 million at the end of the year. All of the components of that are listed here below. Just to kind of walk through the different categories, the non-spendable item there at the top, that is for prepaid expenses, inventory, things of that nature would go in that category. Really, um, where you've spent those funds already, the dollars have left the building, they're not available for future operations. So they're separated in a, in a separate category. Then you have a number of restricted or reserved components. These are all of the state mandated funding sources where you need to spend those dollars in accordance with how they were received. Um, that category or those, those um, items cumulatively together decreased 667,000 or so compared to the previous year. Most of that happening in the operating capital line. There um, are some committed and, and assigned categories. These are internally earmarked or set aside dollars um, related to separation benefits or other um, items that you're planning ahead for um, that you know these costs are out there. Um, so the assigned category decreased by about 334,000 for the year. Um, most of that happening in student act. Excuse me. Not 334,000, 33,000, excuse me. I read the comma in the wrong place there. Wasn't adding up as I was looking at those. Um, so 33,000, so pretty um, similar to the previous year. And then the unassigned category, that's what's available for future operations without any earmarks or tags associated with it. Um, that balance decreased by 646,000 for the year. That is also the component that you look at in relation to your fund balance policy, which your fund balance policy indicates that you would um, strive to have a minimum general fund unassigned, unassigned fund balance of 10% of the annual budget. And for 2023, you're at 10, at 10%. So you are in compliance with the policy you've established for yourselves.
And, and can you remind us, what, what were we last year prior to us uh, spending down or unassigned by 600? Plus, were we at about 12%?
Michelle, do you have that off the top of your head or I, I have to look that one up?
12, 12, something a little over 12.
Okay. Another way for us to look at fund balance is this way, which is unrestricted fund balance as a percentage of unrestricted expenditures. This is the SOD calculation that um, the Minnesota Department of Ed does for us. It gives us the ability to compare to some state average information as well. Um, seeing in 2023, the decrease noted here. Um, and for prior years where we have the state average information, um, you have been slightly under what the state average is the last couple of years. The last couple of slides then look at your special revenue funds, your food service fund, community service fund. And food service we have here, the operations here, it's been a very similar story across districts that we've been talking to, which really is that we're seeing revenues decrease and expenditures increase. So um, equipment purchases, just general cost increases on the expenditure side of things. And revenues really have to do with kind of the shift in the funding sources. In 2022, it was all federally reimbursed. So you had that federal reimbursement rate and this year you're back to, or in 2023, you were back to um, families. And then obviously shifting back now in, in 24 um, to the state funding. So lots of movement and change happening in this fund. In the end, um, fund balance did increase by 154,000 and ended the year at just under 2.3 million. Community Service Fund is the last fund for us, us to touch on here. I'm seeing activity increasing on revenues and expenditure side of things, really the results of increased programming. So continuing to see the rebounding happening, which is great to see. Um, seeing that fund balance in total increased about 327,000 then and ended the year at just over a million. Um, the other thing of note is that the restricted components or the fund balance components are listed below and all are positive. And I can tell you that that is not always the story when we are talking with boards. There are sometimes that some of those components are not fully funding or um, you're not fully funding some of them um, with other means. So that's great to see as well. I'd be happy to take any questions anyone might have beyond what I've gone, gone through here.
All right, board, now is your opportunity.
I guess I was asking, Michelle, as we went, sorry.
Chad, do you have anything?
Yeah, I was thinking if there's knowledge or what, what's the average?
Well, she did, she did have a slide up there on the, the average fund balance in the state compared to where we are and we're below that. I think, I think it's really deceiving though, because the way that they're, they report out fund balance is everything. Or, and we all, we all know that's the case. That's not really the case. We have to focus on the unreserved, undesignedated, because that's the money that we have discretion to make this decisions to spend. The majority of that fund balance are things that we can't spend. It's earmarked legally for only certain expenditures. Uh, specifically, the largest dollar amount up there is for capital expenditures. We can only spend those dollars for capital kinds of items, right? Um, there's, there's some pieces up there for future severance packages um, that we know that we have future obligations to pay out on our contracts. We can't spend that money now because there, that money won't be there uh, for the people that we owe that in the future, right? So there's all of those items. So I think it's really important for us to continue to always know that is, is you're really only looking at, for the most part, the unreserved, undesignedated, because that's the piece that the board has the ability to make decisions on how you can, how you can best spend that, right? And we certainly have to make decisions in all of those other categories, but it's really confined to a small number of areas that we can spend that on.
I have a question about if we can go back to the revenue per ADM served. I think that's like paced slightly. Under the um, there's three different entries, property taxes, state aid and other. What, what would be some of the things under the other category?
Well, that's local, county and federal. It's, it's everything else but your state and, and property taxes. So um, some of the bigger drivers in there are the federal funds. Um, interest revenue, things like that, your fees that you charge.
So here's a question on those federal funds, because during, during the, the pandemic years, we received the additional federal aid, right? And, and generally speaking, we get very little uh, funding from the federal government, very little. The exception of that was during the pandemic when we had got the Escher dollars. Now, we as a district chose to try and make that money last as long as we could to continue to keep within our class size parameters and our staffing parameters. Now, this, this current year is the last year, the last year that we have um, those dollars available, which we have about 1.1 million dollars of federal dollars on the revenue side. So now, when we're planning here after January for next year's budget, the very first thing you do is you take 1.1 million dollars off the revenue side. So we're already in the holder, right? But here's the, the question that I'm, I'm asking is like, how much, how much do, do those federal dollars in last year's audit uh, impact that uh, per pupil aid? Because i- am I assuming right that next year that's even gonna go down because we won't have those federal dollars?
It will definitely impact some things for sure. And you're right in that you had, you know, a couple of additional years to spend those dollars. And you know, that's one piece to consider too, because in this comparison, every district probably chose a little bit different. So some, some districts may have chose to spend more already and are almost finished with it or used it up where you've got some yet this next year. So there is some variation with that as well. But you've been, you know, you see a little bit of an increase here, but you've been pretty consistent across the board here.
I was just wondering if on the general fund, the other for the 2019 and 2020, it was around 630-ish? And then 21, 22, we've jumped to 900 in teens. So just wondering if that was because of the federal or the COVID money that's going in?
I would say likely that was a portion of it. Yep.
Are there any other questions? We will be approving this next.
The, the, I just, one last comment. It's not a question, but I think it's always important for, for the board to know this. And it's important for us to publicly acknowledge the strong work of our accounting department in our school district. Every, you know, our auditors serve hundreds of other school districts and public entities. And every year the feedback I get is that when they come in to do their work in Princeton, it's, it's, everything's in order. We're on top of it and they're, and they, and they haven't found any errors or any kind of blemishes in what we do. And I think that we should, should, should take comfort in knowing that we have such strong, skilled and uh, experienced staff members that uh, are on our team to do that work. Um, because it's a pretty huge feat to manage all of the moving parts and pieces of a 50-plus million dollar budget. It's pretty incredible. So thank you to Michelle and her team and everyone else that's involved with that.
I would also echo that from the board and Michelle, because it's always, I always look at that person, oh, there's stuff in there again. Of course. Kudos to you for that hard work. That, I'm sure that isn't easy. Anything else? Thank you, Caroline.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Everyone.
Okay, we will move on then to the action portion of our meeting. And I will entertain a motion to um, accept the 21, 22 audit as presented. Motion made by Melissa, second by Chad. Is there any further discussion? During then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We move to 11B. We are um, asking you to accept the parking lot purchase agreement as presented. Um, it's not listed here, but it's a little piece of, where are we? Over there.
Would you like me to say a couple of words?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So um, the parking lot that's just, just across the street here that um, has been owned from the city, right? We have had utilized that quite heavily over the years for our team members uh, at the family center and in, in the district center to park, right? Um, there is some parking issues around the area. And uh, I, I really feel that like we need to have that parking for our team members. Um, the uh, city put out proposals for people to purchase that. Uh, we worked with the city and some of our neighbors in the areas to uh, work out an agreement uh, to purchase that. Uh, it was actually quite a somewhat of a controversial item in, in town for a period of time because there was multiple parking lots. Uh, we were able to secure a fourth of the parking lot, which is what we felt like we needed uh, for the huge price of $1. So we purchased that parking lot and we're able to negotiate those terms uh, for $1. And uh, we also have taken, uh, taken on the responsibility of uh, plowing the whole parking lot uh, during the winter. And we will have individual agreements with the other entities, which are a couple of churches. And we will send them a bill for our plowing services. Okay? So the, the expense on our part will be the maintenance uh, during the winter, March month for our uh, portion. It is an extra expense, but I think it's a huge um, it's something that we just needed to do for our team members. I couldn't, we couldn't be having our people have to walk to park on the street in snowbanks and walk with all their stuff, right, into school. Um, so that was something that was really important that, that we needed to get done. And I'm happy that it worked out the way it did. Uh, the city's approved it. Uh, we were hoping the board would formally vote to, to approve that as well. And we'll, we'll be proud owners of a portion of a parking lot in town.
All right, I will entertain a motion to um, accept the parking lot purchase agreement. So moved. A motion made by Melissa. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Eric Strandberg. Is there any further discussion? During then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to 11C to approve the secretary's contact, contract. Um, is there a motion to approve the 23, 25 secretary contract as presented? Motion made by Chad. Second by Don. Is there any further discussion?
I mean, it's the contract that you guys had talked through in finance and through others. Um, it's a two-year contract. 5.35 average over two years. A little bit with the employee sick, uh, sick and safe leave language coming through. We need to make some adjustments there. Overall, not a lot of the language items.
We'll vote, vote by roll call, starting with Melissa.
Yes.
Deb, yes. Eric Mings?
No.
Sue, yes?
Yes.
Yes, Don?
Yes.
Eric Strandberg. Motion carries. We will then move on to approve the superintendent's contract as presented. Is there a motion to approve um, the contract 24 to 26 as presented? Motion made by Eric Mings, the second by Chad. Is there any further discussion there?
Um, I just wanna um, say that um, the finance committee um, was the committee that negotiated this contract um, with Ben. And um, we came to an agreement of um, his is at a 4.7% average per year um, total package increase. Um, and it is a three-year contract. So we're pretty pleased with that. Any other discussion?
During then, we will um, take a vote by roll call, starting with Don.
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Sue, yes. Eric Mings?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Motion carries. Um, there are no additions to the agenda and uh, the future meetings are listed there. And then watch for um, possibly adding a work session to discuss facilities.
Sue, I think our public engagement meeting is the wrong time. It's supposed to be 11. It's this one. So, okay.
Sorry about that. We'll get it changed.
Okay. All right. Um, and then also just the 19th, we have world's best workforce and truth in taxation prior to the board meeting. Oh, no, truth in taxation is part of it.
First thing on board.
Yeah.
We did that last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, we started at 5:30.
So world's best workforce is ahead of time. So just making an adjustment. I know that that's how it'll come in our invite, but um, paying attention to that. Um, I will now um, ask for a motion to close the board meeting to discuss negotiation strategy.
So moved.
Motion made by Don, a second by Eric. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. We are now going into closed section. Thank you for attending.
Have a wonderful break.
You're welcome to join us on the 19th too.
Yeah, come on anytime.